With liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Remember to silence your beeping devices if you have them. The first item on our agenda is citizen concerns. If there are any citizen concerns on an item that is not already listed on the agenda, please come forward.
Connie Barrett, I'm advocate for the three counties in Sioux Rivers region. After attending today's meeting, my concerns continue to remain the same. I am delighted that Rolling Hills will be preparing budgets, including and not including Woodbury County. We will be able to see which services will be eliminated or reduced. That information was or should be available near Christmas. Will our disabled population have a secure new year?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, if I can just respond briefly. The characterization of Rolling Hills today is reported by me at the Sioux Rivers region as that they had discussed doing so, and that I do not believe that budgets will be prepared by the beginning of the year. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? On an item not already on the agenda?
I wasn't.
Name and address, please.
Susan Rochester, 2111 Kennedy Drive, Sioux City. I wasn't able to come to that meeting when you talked about licensing the massage therapists. And I've been a massage.
I believe that was a Sioux City Council meeting.
Oh, forget it.
Happens more often than people think. No harm done. Anybody else? Hearing none, no one else. Item two is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor, discussion. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of minutes of the November 28th meeting. Item four is approval of the claims. Item five, Building Services Director Kenny Schmitz, is approval to assign the Building Services Director abandoned well-designated agent for Prairie Hills building. This is in order to close the dilapidated wells around the shuttered Prairie Hills facility. Kenny Schmitz, do you accept this great power we're about to give you? With great power comes great responsibility. Item six from poll bidder includes item A, approval of a notice of property sale resolution for a parcel, also known as 714 29th Street, and setting that for December 19th at 4:35 PM. And item B, approval of a notice of a property sale resolution for a parcel, also known as 3105 Orleans Avenue, and setting that for Tuesday, December 19th, 4:37 PM. Item seven from Human Resources Director Gillland includes the approval of a memorandum of personnel transactions. This is for a union wage step increase for a DeWitt Rocky. Sounds familiar. This completes the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Taylor, discussion.
I need to abstain from item seven.
Very well. Further discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero except for item seven, which passes four zero with one abstention from Rocky DeWitt for a conflict of interest. Item eight from Simco, Michelle Boston Ellis and Nicole Peterson is an action item, approval of a request for $5,000 in matching funds for US EDA grant.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, well, thanks for getting us on the agenda again today. I came with one of our regional planners, Nicole Peterson. Nicole oversees our comprehensive economic development strategies team at Simco. We have a lot of acronym, our SEDS group. When I came and talked to you, what, probably a couple of weeks ago before Thanksgiving, we were talking about the community projects. I alluded to this study and this proposal that we were putting together. And it's actually moving a little, it's moving pretty fast as we're putting it together. So we thought, you know, let's just get this on the agenda and talk to you guys about it and let you ask questions and we can, Nicole and I can talk a little bit about it because they know at the last meeting you also asked some questions. Just a little background on it, our SEDS committee, they adopted, they adopt a region-wide plan which goes over the different comprehensive economic development, exactly what it says, strategies, our comprehensive economic development goals for the region. With that, you know, we have several, they usually fit under housing, workforce, economic development, transportation, infrastructure. As we are working on those and the group was working on those, we identified some specific projects that we would like to work on that weren't necessarily funded, but we would like to have funding for them. We invited EDA representative to our meeting and started talking to him about different projects. And this project, the US 28 corridor economic development study, came to the surface right away as a project of need. As you know, Highway 20 is a year away, less than a year away from having the ribbon cut for the four lane across Woodbury and Ida Counties in our region. And it's really a great opportunity for our communities to take advantage of that, to start thinking about economic development, to start planning what the corridor is going to look like and how to, you know, best take advantage of those opportunities. So this study really would do just that. And I'm going to let Nicole get up here and kind of talk about the background of the study.
Thanks, Michelle. My name is Nicole Peterson from Simco. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about the study contents, which are on the first page of the memorandum that you received in your packet. And we're going to split this into two phases. And the first phase is a background report, but we will identify opportunities for job growth and business expansion in manufacturing in this Phase One. We're going to reference and summarize existing regional studies and outcomes from other highway projects. We've already heard about an existing study that was done in the Des Moines area, and we're going to try to match that example in our study here. We're also going to do a cluster industry and commercial mapping exercise and analysis. And that's to gauge regional competitive strengths and future potential and opportunities of the region. We're also going to take a look at transportation patterns, of course. We already had a suggestion to add in rail analysis to our study of the Highway 20 corridor. And then finally, in this Phase One, we're going to study the community identities of, of course, those communities that lie within the corridor. And we may expand that depending on our partners in this, in gaining support for the study. And then Phase Two will be our land use strategy, where we investigate the selected sites that came out of the opportunities from Phase One, and then implementation, which includes recommendations and economic development goals and action steps. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the proposed study contents?
Hi, thanks for being here. So my question is, you're aware that there are some comprehensive studies that are being done in communities along this corridor? Do you see yourself interfacing with them along the way? And is that something that, I just kind of wonder process-wise how that works?
Yes. Are you aware of other communities in the corridor, in the Highway 20 corridor? Is that what you meant?
Right.
There are studies already happening on this Highway 20.
They're updating the comprehensive plans on the Woodbury County. They're updating their comprehensive plans.
Oh, thank you.
And sorry, I should have probably prefaced that. That's okay. No, 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 I'm not saying that you're duplicating.
That would be great, yes, we want their number. No, yeah, let's, well, hopefully we'll interact with them heavily in this community identity section. So in the Phase One, and Michelle's going to talk a little bit more about the schedule as we move on here, but that would be spring of next year potentially. If we're granted these EDA funds, we'd like to start spring of next year. But we definitely want to identify the identity of each one of those communities, and hopefully the comprehensive plans will have laid the groundwork for us. That would be terrific, yeah. But we would love to work with the company that's doing that right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, thanks for that question. And then I'd like to move on to Page Two, which outlines the region, and I'll quickly run over that. That Simco is a seven county region, and we do think that this will be informative to the entire region about highway economic development. And we can carry that forward in future studies of other corridors. But there are 12 jurisdictions that are directly affected by the proposed study along that Highway 20 corridor, and that includes Dakota County in Nebraska, Woodbury County in Iowa, of course, Ida County in Iowa, and nine cities west to east, Jackson, Salsu City, Dakota City, Sioux City, Lawton, Mowville, Correctionville, Cushing, and Holstein. And then another 14 communities fall within a 10-mile buffer of the Highway 20, and those are listed there on that Page Two of your memorandum. So, and then on Page Three of your memorandum, we tried to highlight the US EDA investment priorities and criteria. And we were trying to speak to some of these when we developed the study, the portions of the study and the contents of the study. And they basically, in summary, include job creation and private investment, developed outcomes, implementation, and sustainability and durability. Do you have any questions on either the region or the priority and criteria? Now, turn back over to Michelle. And we have developed.
Mr. Taylor.
I have a question for Michelle, sir.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I'm going to hand out just another handout that is a supplement to the budget section of your memorandum. And this, we just developed today, and it outlines all the different stakeholders and different amounts that we're requesting from each one of them. Thank you for asking my question.
You know, I guess I'll address real quick about the comprehensive plans. You know, I understand that all of the communities are working on their comprehensive plans, or a few of them might have one done, you know, like Mowville has theirs done. This would be a little bit different in terms of it would, this plan would, obviously, it would work with those plans and complement those plans, but this is more of a region-wide plan, where each one of those communities will have their individual plans. This will bring it all together into one plan, and really just, you know, concentrate along the corridor. So that's kind of how it would fit in with those comp plans. And I think the last time I did talk to you guys, I kind of threw in there, well, if we do this study, we're probably going to need some money for it. So what we're proposing is the study to cost us $50,000 to do the entire study. EDA said that they would be willing to pay for half of that, so we would need to come up with a local match of $25,000. And looking at this in the memorandum that Nicole just passed out, we kind of broke down what we're going to be asking each one, all the stakeholders. You guys are first on our list, I will say that, that we're going around to. You can see we do have some money dedicated already from Dakota County, and that's because we have, Simco has awarded some Nebraska economic development funds, and we're just starting an economic development plan for them for the entire county, so we're able to leverage some of that money as part of the local match for Dakota County. So, you know, in doing this, I guess, you know, it's a possibility that this might shift, this could change, but this is kind of our game plan moving forward of what we're, we would like to request. We would like each one of the communities to contribute a little bit if possible, to have, you know, to have kind of skin in the game, as they say. It should benefit their communities directly.
How's the reception been in Ida County?
We haven't talked to Ida County yet.
They request to go first. So, and then Cherokee County, I noticed there's a tier three, that there's no amounts listed today.
Yeah, there's no amounts listed. You know, in talking, you know, Cherokee's not directly affected, but you can't say their economic development doesn't, Highway 20 benefits them. There's no doubt about that with, you know, like, for example, Hy-Vee Distribution Center and whatnot. And so, you know, we also put on there, it might be a possibility, the last three, you know, maybe we need to also request from those three, and then that would lessen the amounts up above, you know. I know our request to today said for $5,000, and maybe it could be a request of up to $5,000, and if we can, you know, balance that out with additional funds, I mean, we might have a chance to lower that.
The criteria for the matching funds is simply that it must come from local governments?
I don't know if, did they have a criteria for, does it have to come from local governments? I don't believe that was one of the requirements. It just needs to be part of, you know, you just have to have a local match and identify that. I think when you're looking at a region-wide study like this that would benefit all of us, I think that is, you know, a good thing to do so that there's region-wide buy-in. Looking back, at least, you know, since I've been at Simco for, since 2005, you know, we have a lot of, we have region-wide transportation plans, we have, you know, our economic development strategy plan, which is region-wide. Those are really kind of required plans in order to make sure federal dollars are flowing to the area. We haven't done a region-wide application, a region-wide plan where we're taking the initiative and submitting something as a region in a very, very long time. I think this is a really big step for our area, shows that we're working together, we're, you know, we're interested not only just in each of our individual communities, but we're trying to build up our entire region and our economic development in that. And just putting, even if we don't get funding, even if we don't get everyone to fund the local match, I think just starting that process is really great for our area, and I'm really glad that we're doing that.
I'd make a motion to approve up to $5,000, but from local option sales tax rather than the general fund.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Rattig, out of local option sales tax. Discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Thank you. I also moved to receive the handout into the record.
Second.
Second by Taylor, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item nine from Building Services Director Schmitz is for action, approval of Trosperhoyt Master Control Security Electronics and Elevator Project.
The item before you is an action item to follow up from last week's information and discuss, discussion on the Trosperhoyt Master Control Security Electronics and Elevator Project. We'd like to go ahead and move forward and get bids for that project. As discussed last week, we received back early on on the, on the previously bitted project, bids came in at $552,905, quite a bit higher than what had been projected by Goldbruk Group Architects at the time, about $100,000 higher. So we decided to redesign the scope of that project. We would delete the detention doors and include elevator upgrades as part of the project scope change, and bid the casework as an alternate. So we're now coming before the board and asking for approval to move forward and to seek bids for the project.
I would move that.
Then I'll second it.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Rattig, discussion? This is for the first of three motions?
Yes, actually, if you'd like to do all three motions at once, that would be fine.
I'll defer to.
The.
Discussion on the first motion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Second motion is to receive an open Trosperhoyt Master Control Security Electronics and Elevator Project at 3:00 PM in the Board of Supervisors' office, first floor of the courthouse.
January 9th.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Rattig, discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Third motion?
The third motion is to set a public hearing for January 9th at 4:45 PM at the Board of Supervisors' meeting.
I'll second the motion by Potabom, discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 from the Board of Supervisors, myself, is an action item, approval of a resolution for solemnizing board meetings. I'll be a little open here, could, could be doing a lot better today. Decided to have laryngitis on an item during an item that's quite important to me, and my grandmother passed away a couple hours ago, so excuse me for. Well, thank you. This is an item that, to me, is about religious freedom and choice. I believe that it is a wholesome endeavor for this board to adopt. I think it's a good thing for us to do. What it does is it gives my fellow supervisors the individual freedom to choose to either solemnize the board meetings with a moment of silence or a spoken prayer. In our representative republic, we are elected because of our personal beliefs, not in spite of them. For some of us, those beliefs are informed by our faith. I know that is true for most, if not all, of my fellow supervisors. Would also say politicians too often fulfill the stigma of viewing themselves above the law and not being willing to humble themselves. Prayer shall primarily be for the benefit of the board, but members of the public have the freedom to observe the prayer opportunity if they so choose. At no time shall the board coerce any member of the public to participate or approve of the prayer practice, or criticize, or take any adverse action against any person because of their approval of the prayers. This resolution was drafted in the last few days with the counsel of First Liberty, which is counsel on two cases at the en banc level in federal appellate courts on this issue, and a pending Supreme Court case. I believe there are no better subject matter experts in the entire nation. The resolution allows legislator or supervisor in this case lead prayer rather than prayer led by members of the public or the clergy on very reasonable grounds. Legislator-led prayer involves the least time, least difficulty, and most importantly, the least government involvement. The legal risk of the government officially selecting an eligible pool of public volunteers should be obvious. In fact, when local governments are sued on this issue, it is predominantly driven by an accusation that the government's selection process is unfair or even unintentionally discriminating, in other words, imperfect. Therefore, rather than have the government officially give this privilege to those unaccountable voters, it makes most sense for the legislators themselves to exercise the option. I would also like to point out that moving from the position we are in now, where a moment of silence was brought in to solemnize the board meetings, I don't believe with any consult of legal counsel a couple years ago, to something where we have a written explanation for why we do what we do, is, I believe, even safer from a legal standpoint. In Wallace v. Jaffray, 1985, the Supreme Court struck down a moment of silence held in Alabama public schools on the basis that it violated the Establishment Clause of the US Constitution. That's staggering. And it's also important to realize that there are already acknowledgements of God on this building itself. I write in the back of materials that the west face of the courthouse has engraved, "Justice and peace have met together; truth hath sprung out of the earth." This just so happens to be Psalm 85, 10 through 11. No one is forced to read it or believe that it alludes to the person of Jesus Christ. Similarly, this prayer opportunity will not force anyone to pray anything. What I'm proposing is a, an opportunity, an option on a rotating basis for each supervisor to choose if they would like to solemnize the board meeting by either a moment of silence or a prayer according to their individual dictates. In today's politicized age, where fellow Americans actually sue to remove a cross set as a war memorial in the Mojave Desert, we could be sued for, to remove that Bible verse in our courthouse because it supposedly establishes a state religion. If a moment of silence establishes a state religion. Yet the members of this board are willing to stand by it, I believe. I've heard nothing to the contrary. The interesting thing is, again, that having a policy for, or a resolution for why we do what we do puts us in a defensible position, and I believe sets us up in accordance with recent favorable Supreme Court rulings. The resolution included is a resolution for solemnizing board meetings. I would like to read this, but given my voice, I would ask, if you're willing, Mr. Vice Chair, would you please read the resolution?
I'll read it.
Thank you.
Sure. It says, "Whereas the Congress of the United States, as many as 49 out of 50 states of the Union and the vast majority of local governments open their sessions with an invocation called legislative prayer, and whereas the Supreme Court of the United States in Marsh v. Chambers held a legislative prayer consistent with the Establishment Clause of the Constitution of the United States, given its quote unambiguous and unbroken history of more than 200 years, and whereas the Supreme Court in town of Greece versus Galloway held that local governments may allow such prayers, that the Constitution permits prayer givers to ask their own God for blessings of peace, justice, and freedom, and that prayers reflecting specific creeds can still serve to solemnize the occasion of a legislative session. And whereas in recent years the Board has observed a moment of silence in conjunction with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that at each meeting of the Board, once the meeting has been called to order, an opportunity for legislative prayer shall be held in conjunction with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. This opportunity shall consist either of a legislative prayer or of a moment of silence. The opportunity shall be exercised by one individual supervisor, one per board meeting, on an equal rotating basis. Each supervisor shall have full discretion on whether the opportunity shall be used for a prayer or a moment of silence, and that decision shall not be reviewable by the Board or any other entity. If a supervisor elects to offer a prayer, that prayer may reflect the individual supervisor's specific beliefs according to the dictates of individual conscience, as determined by the sole discretion of that supervisor. The opportunity shall be extended equally to all supervisors, regardless of each supervisor's individual faith, and each supervisor shall respect the prerogative of each or the other supervisors as a policymaker elected by and answerable to the people to exercise the same individual freedom and the choice of how to exercise the prayer opportunity to the same degree that each supervisor exercises that individual discretion in other parts of the board meeting. Be it so resolved this fifth day of December 2017, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors."
Thank you, appreciate that. So again, I think this resolution is, I'm confident in it, and I believe it gives us as a board a solid path in order to provide that choice among ourselves, and guards us legally against any accusation that the selection process for the, of the prayer givers is unfair. Obviously, that would go to who elected the current board members. And that is how we are operating as individuals. And this is also something that has a long, long history of being accepted and being a part of, part of government proceedings. Before any sort of public input, is there any comment from the board members?
I will just make one comment before we get into it, and that's simply that I say a prayer at almost every meeting here. I say it between me and my Lord, and that's where I want it to stay, is private. I don't need an audience for my prayer. And I just, that's all I say. I think we're all free to pray whenever we feel like it. And my voice is almost suspended. It's short.
I would agree.
If I can, I'd like to.
You've been motioning, so.
Sorry.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, if I can address some of which is in the backup material, just because I think it's important. We heard some, a request for legal counsel during last week's meeting, and I just, I want to correct some of what I feel is not necessarily an accurate reflection of what happened. We were asked to accept legal counsel followed by.
We were asked to accept legal counsel followed by a two-and-a-half-hour space of time in which there would be a closed session, and that legal counsel was very clear, would not be given except if we went into closed session. So I want to correct what I feel is an inaccuracy, and here it says, "Unfortunately, my colleagues refused to engage in that relationship for even a moment." I think we made it clear that we would accept whatever advice in open session, or, as Supervisor Raddick, I believe, alluded to, could be disseminated to the board, except that our assisting county attorney at that time advised that it did not seem to meet the threshold of going into closed session. So I want to make sure that that is clear for the record. I know that's not necessarily the issue that's on the table right now, but it is in the backup. It is out there on social media, and so I want to make sure that the position of the board is clear on why that vote was taken.
And the motion was, again, to accept the pro bono services of First Liberty Institute to provide a confidential assessment of the legality of the board's solemnizing practices. The motion to follow would have regarded going into closed session was never taken. And, you know, what was surprising to me is I didn't hear any sort of ideas to make this work as far as getting this counsel. Perhaps the avenue of the closed session was not the most advantageous, but whether or not the board wanted to receive something on an individual basis afterwards, or at least have that option to be received by email. We do have closed sessions on occasion which the board will know are regarding issues that other legal councils involve, believe involve, pending litigation which are not currently in process. So I understand your point, and I just want to make clear what the motion was because due to some of the reporting, it made it sound like the motion that failed was to actually go into closed session.
Right. And I would just say confidential usually implies that that's what would happen and that we were advised as a board that this did not meet the threshold. So I just want to make that clear that there was a reason.
It's water under the bridge. Could have been amended, but it wasn't. Other comments from board members?
I kind of share Marty's position. I do say a prayer probably every one. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable praying in front of my family and others, but at this point, I'd like to hear if Josh has anything, any input, any wisdom for the board.
Well, we haven't been asked to do a review of this specific resolution. It is, it would change it from our current practice. I don't know that we've done a review of our current practice either, but typically when, you know, if there's something that jumps out at me or at our office as far as we're doing something that we shouldn't be doing, or is there a question about this, you know, typically I'll raise that issue. So I would say that the current practice is not one that jumps out at me as there's red flags here. Or I'm also not a constitutional law expert. I think that it can be helpful to seek advice from those that are experts in the field. At the same time, you know, if the board was inclined, we probably could find an attorney that would give us all the reasons as to why we shouldn't have changed the current So I don't know if that's very helpful, but we haven't done a review of this resolution that's been, being put forward at this time. We could do that, but that would take some time.
Well, Chairman Hung asked me several months ago if I would, if I would consider this, and I did say that I would. But I also urged extreme caution because I don't, obviously Josh is an attorney, I'm nowhere near that, but my feeling was that we should use extreme caution because I think for the good of the county, we don't need a lawsuit. And I don't, I'm not exactly comfortable stepping into that puddle to see how deep it is to encourage a lawsuit. So that's my input. I just, I'm just, I'm not looking for a fight. And I'm done.
I'm not looking for a fight either. Fights come no matter what you do. I've learned that. Other input from board members? I guess in response to that, I would repeat my recommendation in the back of materials, which says, "Even if every other supervisor decides to never offer a prayer but only a moment of silence, I would hate to think that we are scared to adopt this resolution and to endorse a choice exercised by Congress, 98% of states and most counties nationwide." We can be sued for anything. I don't think we should base this decision on fear, but rather find some good in what it can do. And send a, send a good message, especially this, with everything going on in this time of year and the fact that we all do have beliefs that I believe are informed by our faith. And I'm surprised by some of these comments. I pray alone, too. But, and I know when the, when the city council discussed this, one of the verses they brought up to oppose it was, you know, "Go to your prayer closet." And, you know, that's really about the motive behind a prayer, that you should do it for the right reasons and not personal gratification. There's obviously dozens of references of public prayer in Scripture. And speaking from my own faith, of course. And, of course, we do it with much pomp and circumstance when we have a Veterans Day ceremony or even events at the Chamber of Commerce, a secular business gathering. We have even louder speakers and more people in attendance and more verbose prayers, which is interesting, that that would be okay and, and something before the board actually makes decisions that impact real people in the county, we would say, you know, let's not do it then, but let's do it for ceremonial purposes in the courthouse upstairs when there's more media present or when there's more attention. So again, it's about the motive and absolutely no disrespect to anyone who would say they pray silently or would like to hold a moment of silence, but I think it actually is deferential and gives my fellow supervisors each their own time to choose what they would like to do and... Again. Yes, Mr. Taylor?
I'm comfortable with our current practice right now. I pray each and every time as well. And my personal faith in Jesus Christ is the most important thing in my life. Whether that means that we open our meeting with a prayer or a benediction at the end or we pray at each committee meeting, my hope is that that wouldn't be a litmus test for those either in this meeting or in the public or on social media, whether that's faithful or not. And that's something that I want to make clear because there's been comments like, even if everyone else is scared, I'm not scared of public prayer. I give the invocation and I give the benediction at those ceremonies that you alluded to. It's a matter of if we think that this is the most appropriate or if we want to continue the current practice right now. I believe it's a practice that we can engage in and continue to have prayer. I don't think it's on constitutionally dubious grounds. I think that's clear by the, there's a little bit of a misrepresentation of the court cases that are used and why the Establishment Clause was struck down in Wallace Jaffray. But at any rate, that would be my, my personal preference for this board.
I guess the only changes I would recommend is maybe go to like the city council format where first order business is silent prayer followed by Pledge of Allegiance, so they put prayer first. But my experience with most public prayer has been that most of it is pretty negative or grandstanding, and the potential for what it can become is, in my opinion, not something that I would want to pursue.
What potential is that?
The inclusivity potential. Inclusiveness of every kind of prayer.
Is that how, is that how you would pray if you were given the opportunity?
Well, how I would pray is not necessarily how somebody else would pray.
Exactly.
But I also have the right to pray at any point. I mean, as far as it's in line with the rules of order. And quite frankly, anyone could come up and pray for three minutes. That citizen concerns.
Well, that would be interesting. I don't think that's going to happen.
I'm just saying, that's a legal right.
And just to be clear, in your solemnizing, it wouldn't matter the faith background of each supervisor.
Correct.
A Muslim prayer could be offered and you would be okay with that?
Correct.
To solemnize this board meeting?
Correct.
Or a Jewish prayer or Catholic, but no invited clergy?
Correct.
So if somebody felt uncomfortable praying himself, he would not be able to designate somebody else?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Be able to pass or for a moment of silence. And apologize if you took offense to the word scared. Perhaps that relates more to the comments from these gentlemen about lawsuits. Honestly, it's, if it's a risk analysis, then I think that doesn't stand up to the defensibleness of this resolution. It's my opinion.
Well, would you be opposed to a witchcraft person or a...
Would I?
Yeah.
Personally?
Well, would you allow it? Could you, could you refuse?
It would not be, in this regard, up to me. If the people want to hear a Satanist or a Wiccan pray, then they can elect one.
Well, that's part of my fear is that one will come in and challenge it. And, I mean, I guess I'm questioning whether we as supervisors can just say, well, we're the only ones that can offer the prayer. I'm concerned about the legality of that.
Okay.
So yeah, I am...
But do you understand the legal risks of choosing someone as a governmental body and having the response of, well, why didn't you choose this person instead? Or why didn't you choose a non-religious person to offer a prayer? There's, you know, there's people that travel around and try to get permission to pray a secular prayer or an atheist prayer at local government meetings, and when the local government says no, then they've won. They either say, no, you won't, or they shut down the practice. This is immune to that because it does not put us out into that realm of choosing and picking and setting up a spreadsheet of which denomination has how many pastors on the list and the rotation.
And I appreciate at the very least that that is one defense. Like Greece versus Galloway was 97.5% from one denominational background or influence, which is why it was challenged, but it did even then hold up the constitutionality there.
Well, with that, is there any citizen input? If you are, if you would like to address the board, please come forward. Three minutes, please, with your name and address.
I'm Chase Gordon, and my address is 2410 East Solway Street. I wasn't going to comment, but I would like to get clarification from Mr. Potabom and Mr. Raddick and Mr. Taylor, based on the comments that, and Mr. DeWitt, based on the comments offered, your, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Potabom, that you're not comfortable praying out loud, but you like the system that you currently pray, which, just to clarify, this is an elective. You can elect for a moment of silence, correct? That is what you're putting... So in essence, you're not declining, or you're not accepting that you have to pray out loud. You're declining the individual religious freedom of your fellow board members. And so the question of motive that was brought now because we wanted to clarify motive, why you don't want to pray personally or why you're uncomfortable with it, Mr. Raddick articulated that public prayer can lead to grandstanding, but we don't decline public prayer at weddings. We don't decline public prayer at funerals. We talked about legal risks, but there was, so there are reasons that personally you'd be uncomfortable. What is the motive behind declining fellow board members the right to pray a prayer? And is it personally offensive? Or is there some motive you'd like to clarify on why you don't feel another board member should have the right as a board member to pray publicly? I just want a clarification on that. So whichever would like to respond.
All right. First of all, you said that I was uncomfortable praying out loud. That's not what I said. I said, I don't need an audience.
No, no, yes, I understand. I'm, yeah.
There's a difference. I pray out loud.
Sorry if I miscommunicated.
At weddings, at funerals, at church.
But you don't want to do it here.
No. And I don't think the government body is the place to do that.
So you are against because of your position on separation of church and state, et cetera, where you don't feel that it's appropriate, that a government official should lay aside their faith when they enter the public office?
That's why I say my prayer. I'm not laying aside my faith. I say my prayer.
You just don't feel that it's appropriate.
Okay. Can I finish one?
Yes, please.
All I said was, I don't need an audience to say my prayer, and I don't think the government body is a place for us to be leading in prayer. And this for the record, I agree with Supervisor Taylor when he said that. I like the system we have now. The moment of silence gives me the chance to say my prayer.
And because...
I usually pray for wisdom.
Sure. And because of that, you feel that it's not appropriate for your fellow board members to pray out loud either?
Yeah, personally, I don't think it is.
Right, okay. And if that is your position as well, then, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Raddick and Mr. DeWitt, you don't feel it's appropriate for your fellow board members to pray a prayer? You said you were comfortable with the moment of silence, so if anybody would like to clarify your motive on your position from that other perspective, not why you, what your personal preference is, but why you don't want the other board members? And I've gone over, so I can sit down if you prefer. I just would like to hear your response.
This is starting to sound like a litmus test that he alluded to.
A litmus test?
Right, that we have to justify to you...
I'm asking you to clarify your motive.
I'm comfortable with the way it is, and I don't feel that, you said that, you said that people pray at weddings, pray at funerals. Well, last I knew, a wedding and a funeral is not a government entity or a government...
So you share the same position as Mr. Potabom?
I don't like you putting words in my mouth. I'm just telling you that a wedding and a funeral is not a government business meeting, and I'm solemnizing the meeting with my prayer for the Lord to maintain safety for law enforcement and military personnel and other people in my life that are, that are having health problems. So for me to justify to you who I pray to or why I pray, I don't think I need to.
You don't need to. I'm just, I was just asking for clarification, and you articulated something very similar. So, but I'm not, don't mean to put words in your mouth, it just, it was a similar... It's just, it was a similar, it's just a similar statement.
That's probably as clear as I can be for.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Raddick, Mr. Taylor?
I would say that the appropriateness of what I feel is in place right now is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. It allows me to pray. I am praying for humility and guidance on some thorny issues. Supervisor DeWitt may be praying for law enforcement. Supervisor Hung, in this case, may be praying for his family. May be praying for guidance and clarity on this particular issue.
You just don't want it formalized?
Not necessarily. I may be praying in a different way than Supervisor Hung is at that time, and I don't feel that's an abrogation of the county attorney down there or our county auditors' right to pray as well. Because, you know, taking that same exact philosophy, we're denying them their right to pray. But I'm, I'm saying in this instance, I feel it's an appropriate space of time for each of us to either approach the Lord, which I do, or for someone to choose not to. And so that would be my position. And as far as my motive, I hope that it's to do what is, what is good and what is right. And if I'm an error on that.
And, and part of that is that, in, in your position again, but you're, you don't feel, you feel the system is good for everyone, that you do not want to formalize prayer and out loud. I mean, that's, that's what you're saying, because you're comfortable with the moment of silence.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this is interesting. A few of us have said what we pray, but to say it as what it is, we not only don't want to do it ourselves, we don't want another supervisor to have the opportunity to do that. I'm not saying that's a litmus test and you keep, that's been brought up two times. This is, you know, I, I came in here not knowing how my fellow supervisors would vote. It was radio silence when I submitted this item, so I could think anything. But I am, I'm surprised that, that there is this defensiveness, and that's what I call it. This is no litmus test. I'm not saying if you vote against this, you're not a Christian or a Jew or a Muslim or whatever we all identify as. I believe all of you when you say you pray. But if you're praying for protection for law enforcement, I think that would be inspiring for the people of Woodbury County to hear that and agree with that. And if you're praying for wisdom on what to do with, on an item, Mr. Taylor, that has been brought up under citizen concerns for like the last six months, I think it would be good for people to see the human side of the board. And Mr. DeWitt, you did tell me that you were supportive of this in the past. And, you know, part of the reason for my waiting was to see how some other court cases came out, that came out favorably at the appellate level. I don't get, I don't understand. I'm not accusing you. I'm not saying there's a litmus test. I just don't understand the, the concern of there to be caution with this statement that you support. You support this. That's what I heard in the past. What, what more caution could be, could be given to this resolution? I don't, I don't understand how it could be more solid. I don't understand if there's a local law firm that would say that they have a better track history, track record on this issue than, than First Liberty. It's prevailed at the Supreme Court level and appellate level and represented a couple district court cases. I'm just seeing a, I'm just seeing a line of discussion that, that doesn't make sense to me. And I'm not accusing anyone of not being a Christian, so don't take it that way. But again, we are comfortable with the pomp and circumstance of prayers in some settings in government buildings and government proceedings, but not others. And I just question why, why not at the one where we actually make decisions? Is there someone who'd like to speak?
Susan Rochester in Sioux City. I just have a couple Bible verses. Romans 1:16, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek." And 22 and 23, "Professing to be wise, they became fools." No, 21, "For even though they knew God, they did not honor him as God or give thanks, but they became futile in their speculations, and their foolish heart was darkened." First Timothy 4, 4 and 5, "For everything created by God is good, and nothing is to be rejected if it's received with gratitude. For it is sanctification, for it is sanctified by means of the word of God and prayer." And 2 Timothy. Oh, nuts. 2 Timothy 2:12. "If we endure, we shall also reign with him; if we deny him, he will also deny us. If we are faithless, he still remains faithful, for he cannot deny himself."
Well, you got, well, you got that there. Can you read Matthew 6:5?
Sure.
Is that the word about the prayer closet?
No.
Good. "And when you pray, you are not to be as the hypocrites, for they love to stand and pray in the synagogues and on the street corners in order to be seen by men. Truly I say to you, they have the reward in full." Well, I don't believe that Matthew is a hypocrite and, and I think you don't have to, I mean, nobody's forcing anybody to pray. And just let it be silent then. He's still speaking to God then. I mean, and I love that you guys are all praying silently before you come in here. But God gives us wisdom. And when we pray, we're open to receive His wisdom. And the Bible's full of wisdom. If we, if we just seek Him, we're going to become smarter. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Warren. I live in Sioux City, Iowa. I too think it's great that you guys all pray. But Matthew, the scripture that Susie just read, it wasn't talking about people like you or me. It was talking about the Pharisees and the Sadducees and how they would stand out front and proclaim their love for Christ and make a show of it. It had nothing to do with a humble prayer at a meeting like this. And I think it's shameful, very, very shameful, that you guys are all so fearful of allowing somebody on your board who wants to share their faith in a prayer. It doesn't matter whose faith it is, but for that person not to be able to openly share their faith the way in prayer is shameful. You guys don't have to do it. It's stated right there in the paper. All you have to do is just pass it on or not acknowledge the prayer and just have a moment of silence. But I am ashamed of you all. I really am. And I am a citizen. And I think it's, it's so wrong. And so to quote a scripture out of context is absolutely not appropriate.
My intent was not to get into a theological debate, and that would not happen as we each give a prayer. We're not going to be interrupted and shouted down or debated by any other board member. That's what the resolution would say. But again, it's, it's about your, it's about choice. And if you personally feel a certain way, then I'm just asking you to decide if you want to apply that to the rest of the board. Some of the scriptures and comments about, you know, the motive behind public prayer being a bad thing possibly, or being grandstanding or being?
Say 99% of the public prayers I've seen have been that.
Okay. Well, that's too bad.
It is too bad. And I don't want it here.
Well, I don't think you'd pray that way.
I don't think I would either.
Well, there you go. That's 20% of the board. You're going from 1% of the public to 20% of the board.
We're not making decisions for this year. We're making decisions for years beyond.
Correct.
And quite frankly, I, I believe we're making the best decision as a majority here today. And no insults to you, no affronts to you. I just, I just disagree with a vast majority of what you see in public prayer. Most of it's an affront to God. And quite frankly, I, I just don't want to see it in our courthouse. If, you know, we want to offer a prayer of dedication at different points, different times, there's nothing that can stop it anyway. It's your freedom of speech. You bring up important concerns, you can do it at citizen concerns. You could come in anytime during the week and we all have that right. You know, I was one of the people out reading chapters of the Bible, when I read the entire Bible in front of the courthouse. And I, you know, I don't even need to defend myself. It doesn't matter. The fact is, I think the majority of the board can make their own decision.
And if that was what I thought would happen, by saying a prayer, that there would be some, be some affront or some overly verbose or, or problematic or what have you, then I would just do what I'm suggesting regardless of what the board says today. But I'm not. I'm simply putting this out there and I respect the board's decision, which is very clear. But, you know, it's not fair to make that characterization because that's not what is be, excuse me, that is not what is being proposed today. I would like the board to have a defensible document of writing for what, why they do what they do, any case. Is there any other citizen input? Hearing none is?
Hi, this is Naylin Ong. I'm 3418 Garretson Avenue. I know that most of you guys know that I am a U.S. citizen. I'm coming from Honduras. And as most of you know, Honduras, or might not know because the news do not report it, Honduras is pretty much becoming a communist country where you're not able to have free speech. And I feel, I thought that coming to the United States, I would wish it's considered a free country. I thought that just like you would like a moment of silence, I think someone else can want a prayer. So I just thought that that was just free for everyone to do, in government or non-government. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. In this case, the government is representative of the people. And of course, in the U.S., we do have many freedoms. It would appear less so when you become elected, at least in your official capacity.
I don't know if that's, I would disagree with that, Mr. Chair. The fact that your very proposal denies an elected official up here and an elected official over there isn't an abrogation of their freedom of speech. So I think that, you know, saying, well, Auditor Gill can't pray, and so I just think we need to be careful and specific on argumentation, so.
I would move the resolution. Is there a second?
In order to get a vote, I will second that. And I think everything deserves the vote one way or the other.
I would thank you, but?
You may not want to roll down, but I, I do firmly believe that anything somebody breaks through deserves the vote. And for that reason, I'll second the motion.
Second by Potabom. Any other comments? Halls in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, one to four, with Raddick, Potabom, DeWitt, and Taylor opposed. Item 11 is a chairman's report for information, includes item A. Historical committee on November 30th, I attended with Supervisor Taylor. We had it, we had a good recap of the removal of the contents of the cornerstone and actually held some of the board meeting up in the rotunda because it went a little longer than we thought. You know, the double scene box was a little harder to get open than we would have imagined. But it went well and I'll hand it over to Mr. Taylor for any other updates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just in the backup is the, the agenda, which shows the event for the days. It's starting to come together and very excited about some businesses that are looking to donate and to underwrite for specific costs. And so Thursday, we're going to meet with the Linblades and a couple from the tech department to hone in on the audio visual tour, so that should be good. And looking at, I getting a dedicated website. So I think a lot of good things are coming together and it should be an exciting time. Thank you very much.
And item B is a town hall meeting I've scheduled in your backup. You can see the agenda for December 11th, Lawton. As you know, Sloan and Salix, due to turnovers on their council, requested town hall meetings next year. Lawton is reasonably close to where many of us live in case there's inclement weather. And so foresee a lively discussion there and the board should likely be prepared to hear some feedback on the ambulance issue. And hopefully some, some good discussion as well. Item 12 is reports on committee meetings. Yes, how did Sioux Rivers go?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sioux Rivers went, I think, well. And the reason that I say that is we had quite a protracted meeting, but we gained some clarity on what Sioux and Plymouth County's positions will be regarding the funds that Woodbury County would be moving forward with, should Rolling Hills be accepting. And the agreed upon, and I'll, I'll let people look at the minutes and the audio, but it was 61% of unexpended funds. And there was no claim that would be laid to Woodbury County's Tri-View Building. So those are both fair characterizations of their positions. They did make clear that they would claim that the Crisis and Stabilization Center belonged to the region. I had asked for a legal opinion from the regional attorney who was there, but it was, it was clear that a two-county region cannot stand except for legislative remedy. So getting that clarity was much better. I will say I'm very disappointed that once again, the Friendship House funding in Woodbury County was voted against. And I appreciate our auditor making clear that it would take a motion. Is that a fair characterization? In order to do that, because the last motion on the table was that the Friendship House could go forward. I also think it, as an update, it should be noted that a similar motion in Plymouth County to expend $275,000. There was monies that were asked to be rescinded or given back by the CEO and a Plymouth County Short a motion to do so. And so that happened and they will be able to go forward with the remainder of what we approved as it's invoiced. I made that motion because I wanted to be clear that we will still expend funds in Plymouth County. Plymouth County, even though they are resisting spending funds on a similar building project in Woodbury. All of that to say, I think it's good, because I think this will give Rolling Hills some of the clarity that they need in order to be able to make a decision. If anyone has any questions, or Supervisor Raddig, if you want to add to any of that?
I would say it was kind of a breakthrough there, as they took some advice from Woodbury County in that meeting. Of course, it was to rescind funding to the Friendship House, but I guess, you know, first time they took legal advice from us, so that was a breakthrough.
You mentioned the Tri-View building.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I'm still learning this region stuff.
Sure, sure.
So we own that building.
We do.
How many of the employees there are Woodbury County employees?
I believe we have five. Dennis Agun.
No, no, I mean that work in this capacity for the region.
Five.
Five. Four. Three. You have Sioux Rivers employees that are technically, people that work, are working in the region technically, Woodbury County employees. So you do have four of them in one Sioux County employee.
Because I know we also, we also have the new, the jail diversion program. Is she a Woodbury County employee?
Yes, she's here.
Okay.
She's right up there. I'm not pointing to her, but I think she's officed, if that's...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, wait a minute, am I blind?
No, I'm not pointing to her.
My question is, and you know, when all this happens July 1, are those employees going to lose their jobs?
That will be a determination, according to the Rolling Hills region, and one of the premises under which the board made a motion to seek was their stipulations is that they would make all staffing decisions. And so I think that that will ultimately be up to the Rolling Hills Governance Board, should Rolling Hills vote to accept Woodbury County in. So those would be at the behest of the CEO and Governance Board.
So they would be up to them, they wouldn't be our employees then?
Right. Those staffing decisions would be theirs.
Okay. Because that's, that was one of my, and I, part of it popped up when I heard you say the building. I thought, okay, wait a minute, there's people in that building?
Right. But it is a good thing, because prior to this, and yesteryear, there has been, it has been deemed a region building, or called that, and there's been some points where we have had issues there. So it was refreshing to hear, you can have it. And again, I would urge anyone to look at the minutes, or to hear the audio, to vet whether that's a fair characterization.
And did I, did I hear that there are employees in that building that work for Sioux County?
One.
One, okay. Because I'm still trying to understand this whole region thing anyway, so...
But it was our building before we joined the region?
Correct. And it's steed in Woodbury County's name, and there has been, the whole of all dollars contributed are from Woodbury County taxpayers prior to regionalization, which is a salient...
Did we already determine what we were going to charge in back rent? That's a joke.
One, one too many.
This is a little, I guess, hot topic, but do we know if there will be an action item on the Rolling Hills agenda?
I anticipate they do have a December 20th meeting, and so with that, my hope would be, and I actually would like to follow up as well, I think the Rolling Hills Governance Board meeting, to me, was very, very positive. And the reason that I say that is that we had a discussion for over 90 minutes. And I know the characterization from others may be reluctance. I complimented them on their vetting, their due diligence, and even a couple who have said, we're not necessarily excited. I said, you're doing your job. You're doing the due diligence that we want to see in government. So I think if the answer was no, it would have been a five-minute meeting. So I'm hopeful, and there were a couple of very positive comments, too, from a couple of the supervisors on what we do bring to the table. So I anticipate that it will be a topic of discussion, at the very least, at their December 20th meeting.
Because I am still trying to save my voice, but I have one more question.
If you both keep talking at the end, you won't have anything...
Mine is from the surgery, and it's going to be six weeks before, so I can blow it out every once in a while, just for the heck of it. When we levy for the mental health through the regions, does each county levy their own amount, or is that decided by the region?
It's decided by the region as a whole, in both Sioux Rivers and in Rolling Hills.
So that's the same in both of them, as far as who will set the levy for Woodbury County?
Right.
Again, I'm just trying to learn the region, switching regions in the middle of this year.
The learning curve's not a, and if anybody would like it after January 1st, I will fight you for it, but it's a steep one.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other reports on committee meetings? Any citizen concerns?
I'm a building services director.
It's not often that I come before the board and have good news to report, so I'd like to report some good news related to our Steamtrap project at the courthouse on the Trosper Hoyt Buildings. We received some very favorable pricing when we did that project. We've also received some favorable rebates associated with that project. The project went very well. I'd like to invite Shane with the Baker Group up to give you some of the numbers. I've shared briefly those numbers with Matthew last, last week, and the rebates with Dennis earlier, but I wanted the whole board to hear the figures that we've got, and know that their dollars were utilized in a very good manner.
Hi, Shane Albright, Baker Group. So when we originally started the Steamtrap project, we had a budget of about $360,000. The rebate that was promised to us was $32,000. We go through an approval process. They say you do all these things, you're going to get $32,000, minus if the project comes in under budget, because then it's going to go down proportionally to, you didn't have to spend as much money, so you don't get as much money back. Our project cost is $113, was what the Steamtrap number was. A rebate check came in, we got a rebate check for $40,000, which was actually in excess. We took, we took, because our numbers were down, we were able to include the Baker Group's fee in that, as well as the engineering on the project, and still have it stay within the cost. So we actually got our numbers up to over 30% rebate for the Steamtrap. So we got a very good return on your money back to you. So that's, that's a really good positive for that project.
Very good.
Thank you.
I hope you were going to say the old one's made out of gold, too.
That was two too many.
You said one, okay.
PJ James, County Attorney's Office. Just wanted to give another quick update on two items. One, I spoke briefly previously about a voca grant that we received to hire a part-time attorney to help with some domestic violence-type issues. We've just gotten clearance to use that money, so hopefully I'll be working with HR and coming back to the board. My hope is the December 19th meeting to get approval to hire that part-time person, which those voca grants will pay for over a three-year period. The second piece is, as it applies to the fine collection department, we've been looking for an avenue, and I've been talking with Chairman Ong about another space. We've just run out of space to meet with clients and the public within that office that we have now. We believe we found the space. I'll be working with Kenny, and I've talked to him previously to come up with some numbers. And again, I hope to come back to the board December 19th, not only with those numbers, but hopefully have the ability to pay for what we're going to have to do to make that space available to us, so, thank you. Any questions?
Any other?
I have, I just wanted to run by a date by you, because we talked about having that meeting with the, our training with the township trustees, plus a meeting with you folks. January 8th is, is a Monday night. Does anybody have any issue with that? Pardon?
I won't be able to.
Anybody else?
I have nothing on the calendar at this point. It's good for me.
I guess so. Should work for me.
Okay. I just, I want to do it as soon as possible. We couldn't do it in December here with, but Dennis wanted to make sure we did it as soon as we can to get, because everybody wants to, they'll be in their budget cycle. The sooner the better. Sorry.
And thank you for working on that.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other citizen concerns? Any board concerns? Please remember, next week, Tuesday, 11:30 to 1, there'll be a Christmas luncheon down here. The supervisors are free to serve our employees. Hearing no other board concerns, we are adjourned.